...consent portion of the agenda, and there are two items, and I understand one of them may be coming off, will not be individually discussed and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report, and as an individual present or a member of the commission, requests that item be removed from the consent agenda and separately considered under the public hearing agenda. The City of Des Moines is pleased to provide accommodations to individuals or groups with disabilities and encourages participation in city government to better serve you when possible. Please notify us at least three business days in advance at area code 515-283-4209 should special accommodations be required. Assistive listening devices are available for meetings in the council chambers. The Planning and Zoning Commission meetings are also broadcast on MediaComCam, the cable channel seven for customers with that service. The broadcast is also streamed live in real time on the City of Des Moines website at Click on "Watch Live" link for those meetings. Of course, you won't be here live, but that'll be fine, I guess. Are we all right? Do we have a quorum? Quorum being present? Minutes? Has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes? I understand there are a couple corrections, and those have already been noted. Any other corrections that you're aware of? Okay. Move it. Okay. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed? Same sign. You're abstaining. Did you get that? Ted abstained. Okay. All right. I understand that, Eric, first of all, I understand that item number six, they've asked that it be continued till the next meeting?
Yes, my understanding is there was a press release that was sent out that the neighborhood association and the applicant were both in agreement to hold that meeting off until August 16th.
Okay. That was what I was looking for, was a date. Okay. Everybody understand? Is there a motion?
I'll move to continue.
Okay. Move to continue to August 16th. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed? Same sign. Acclamation. Thank you. Were you two here on that item? All righty. Moving on to items number one and two, I understand that Casey's would like to have it removed. Is that right, Eric?
Yes.
All right. So we can remove one. Are there any objections with respect to item number two? Is there a motion? Okay. CJ. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed? Same sign. Thank you. All right. Moving on to item number one, it's a request from Casey's Marketing Company, represented by Brad Church, for review and approval of an amendment to a site plan, Casey's Des Moines, number 2314, under Design Guidelines for Gas Station Convenience Stores on Property Located at 3527 Indianola Avenue, to allow for a 15-foot by 40-foot, 600-square foot addition to the west end of the existing building for a kitchen area expansion. Eric, are you presenting on this one?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to leave it at, my understanding is that Casey's is in agreement with everything in the staff report. The only thing that they want to speak to the commission on is our recommendation that they use brick on all walls of the addition. Currently, the status of the building is that the back facade does not have brick, and they want to maintain the same material for the addition, for that same facade of the building. And so they're basically wanting to make their case for that change in the staff recommendation. I don't know if you want me to go through the entire thing, or...
I don't think so. Any questions? Greg?
Eric, just to clarify, or maybe they will, that addition is, I assume, three-sided. So they want it on all three sides, or the two sides that would face out brick? Or do they need to answer that?
I think they would still use brick on the same facade, the north facade, or the west facade and the south facade. It would be the north facade that they would want to use the same material.
All right.
Any other questions? Thank you. Eric, is the applicant here?
Yes.
Please come forward. Please give us your name and address.
Rich Ayers, Environmental Design Group, 6601 West Town Parkway in West Des Moines. We are requesting the commission's input on the requirement to place brick on the rear side of the building to try to maintain the unified look along the back. The site we're talking about is along the backside here. We have Northeast 14th along here, and Indianola Road along here. The, blowing up the side of that a little bit, we have a building...
I think...
This is the building here. It fronts along here, so we have existing brick, existing brick, and we're proposing this little addition here to have brick. The rear side is only visible at a very skewed angle from Southeast 14th. The strip center blocks the view. The only view to it is from the back dumpster area. Along the residential side, there's landscaping all along there. We're also adding additional landscaping along there as a buffer. To give you kind of a feel of this, this is a photograph from the parking lot, and you're seeing just a slight skew of brick, and then the rest would be the existing bronze metal. We would like to make all of that the existing bronze metal. The photograph from adjacent to the strip center, again, you have just a little area of the addition that would be visible. The landscaping along the back blocks the view of majority of the rear elevation. And then the final view is from the back truck dock area, and again, you have just a slight view of the addition there. And we are asking for your input.
I'm sorry.
Have you heard from the neighbor, the 1502 Evergreen person?
We haven't heard. We didn't get any response to our, nobody came to view the site plan, or no phone calls were received on it.
Jim?
Mr. Chair, I am really familiar with this area. I'm really familiar with this building and the parking lot. I feel, it is sitting on a hill, and it, I feel the standards should remain high in what the city expects. That shopping area is full for the first time, 100% occupancy in many, many years, and I think we need to keep the momentum going. And I feel, especially with the addition going the direction it's heading, I really think that the brick needs to stay, just like for the standards, keep them up. It's my opinion.
Do you have anything further?
Just that we're adding 15 feet of brick, which is just 18% of the rear wall, that we're concerned that that would look a little disjunctive.
Anything else?
No.
Thank you. Is anyone, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak on, in favor of the application? Please come forward. Favor of the application. Seeing none, is there anyone here in opposition to the application? Please come forward. Seeing none? Need any rebuttal time? Apparently not. Want to go ahead and close the public hearing? Greg?
I'll make a motion.
All right.
I'd like to move staff, with the exception, to allow Casey's not to put brick on that 15-foot side.
All right. Mike?
Just one comment. Eric, did you touch on this in the presentation? As far as eligibility for tax abatement, if the waiver is granted on the brick on the rear, would they be eligible for tax abatement?
Strictly under the guidelines, that wouldn't allow them to get tax abatement on the addition. I'm not sure if they're planning to seek tax abatement or not, but I think they're aware that that might jeopardize the possibility.
Just wanted to make sure the applicant was aware of that.
Anything else? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and call it to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed? Ted and Tim. Ted and Tim. And Will. And myself. Got it? It passes. Okay. Thank you. Moving on to item number four, request from Timber Creek Homes LLC, represented by John Walker, to rezone property located at 2000 East 33rd Street. Eric, you're presenting on this one as well?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir.
This request is to rezone in order to allow an infill duplex, or two-family dwelling. The property is in the Grayswoods neighborhood at the northwest corner. This is the Catholic school to the north. Mecca treatment facility is directly to the east, so Easton Boulevard and East 33rd Street, so very close to that intersection. Right now, you have two family dwellings where I'm pointing my pen here on the corner, and the two directly to the south of this property. Otherwise, I think we're generally single-family. The boundary line between the Accent neighborhood and Grayswoods is right here, and then the northwest is Sheridan Gardens. So we have three affected neighborhood associations that all got notification and were included in the applicant's invitation to the neighborhood meeting, which my understanding was conducted last night, and I'll let them speak to that. If you're looking at the property to the east from East 33rd Street, and I apologize for the sun there coming through the trees...
It's not a boy...
But it was a bad time of day for taking these shots. This might give it a little better feel. This is looking at it more from the southwest to the northeast. It's a fairly narrow property, and I should point out that even with the rezoning, it will still need some level of supportive adjustment relief in order to allow for a duplex structure. So under R2 zoning, you still need to have a 75-foot wide lot, and there's minimum lot area as well to allow for a two-family dwelling, and so they would need to seek that relief.
Do we have, Eric, do we have any topographical map or anything like that? Because that place drops off like a stone.
I don't know if I have a topo map, but if we go back to the aerial, I'll give you a sense that the property drops...
Quickly.
Steeply here, and this is a drainage way down through here. So the eastern third of the property would be hard to build with either accessory structures or the two-family building unless a significant amount of fill was brought in and compacted. So it would also involve removal of trees to do that. So my sense is that there wouldn't be a lot of desire to do that from a cost standpoint. As you can see, the area is fairly well timbered. This is looking at the two duplexes to the south of the subject property, and a little bit different angle further south, so you do start to get into single-family then further south. You can get a better sense. This is zooming in a little bit, trying to give you a sense of the foliage. This is looking at it from directly from Easton, so this property would be, the backside of this property would be here, so you can start to get a sense of how this relief changes as you go east. And then the main part of the property would be behind this two-family unit that faces This is the response cards we got. So where's two in favor, two in opposition? This doesn't trigger in itself a six, seven vote. However, if the Plan on Zoning Commission recommends denial, it would require a six, seven vote of the city council to approve. Staff is recommending denial of this, just in reviewing it. Although there's some character to say there's two-family dwellings in the area, we think that the size of the parcel is too limited in nature to really support a two-family dwelling, and it's on a fairly busy street. It's not a, it's not a local residential street, it's more of a, kind of a collector-type street. So two additional driveways backing into public street presents a little bit more of a hazard. We're not seeing how this, wouldn't be more ideal for a single-family under the current zoning, so we're recommending denial.
Greg?
Two duplexes, or however many they are, to the south, are they on 62-foot-wide lots?
They're, I believe they are. I believe they're similar-sized lots. If not, they're slightly larger, but...
Those were built in the 60s or whenever, when we, when most of Des Moines was...
When most of the city was R2, and there was a different bulk of regulations.
So this lot got downzoned at some point?
Yeah, in 96, when most of the city that was R2 reverted, there was three large area rezonings which zoned most of the city into R160.
Okay.
This shows you kind of how tight they are, lot line to lot line.
And Eric, do you show a shot where it shows the intersection there, too?
Uh...
No.
I don't know if I actually faced the intersection directly. I just had the one that was from the north.
Yeah. Yeah.
The Grayswoods plan is, was actually adopted before the 2020 plan and was integrated in, so the land use, future land use of the Grayswoods plan was brought into the Des Moines 2020 Community Character Plan, so they're one and the same, basically.
Any other questions? Thank you. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Come forward. Give us your name and address.
My name is John Walker, and my address is 4975 Andrews Place in Pleasant Hill, Iowa. To reiterate a little bit of what Eric said, there is some difficulty building on that lot, but I have a plan of the structure. It would not entail all that brick. It probably have brick under the windows, but the overall architectural feel is there. The dirt that we would remove for the foundation would go into a berm wall along the northern My original proposal showed parking in the front, but after doing some more measurements, I can get the driveway to the rear on the street. This is 33rd right along here, so I can, I have a proposal to put the driveway to this, to the south side, and then a possible garage in the future. I don't have that in my budget plans right now. It's a great lot, it's a great neighborhood. This is, I feel, the best economical use for that lot. It's an ISO, it's vacant, it's full of trash half the time, random people parking on it. Just want to try to improve the neighborhood by putting this duplex in there.
Any questions? Thank you. Anyone here to speak in favor, I'm going to open the public hearing. Anyone here to speak in favor of the application, please come forward. In favor of the application? Seeing none, is there anyone here in opposition to the application? Please come forward. Give us your name and address.
I have copies of my remarks for the commissioners and one for the record. Good evening, Chairman Flaherty and Commissioners. My name is Karen Shupin. I live at 3804 Indianapolis Avenue, Des Moines, Iowa. I'm Chair of Grayswoods Neighborhood Association. I've been involved with the association for 13 years. On July 9th, 2012, our Grayswoods Board of Directors unanimously voted to oppose the request from Mr. Walker to rezone the property at 2007 East 33rd Street from R160 to R2. In addition, Grayswoods opposes amending the Des Moines 2020 Community Character Plan. Grayswoods was formed in 1996, and as you know, the Des Moines City Council, Pope County Board of Supervisors, Neighborhood Revitalization Board, and Plan and Zoning Commission approved our neighborhood plan on March 1st, 1999. Residents of Grayswoods worked diligently with the Des Moines City staff to create the neighborhood plan. Our plan calls for low-density, owner-occupied, single-family homes built on larger lots compatible with and sensitive to the surrounding neighborhood. The plan also discourages the conversion of single-family homes into duplexes or multifamily housing. There is a very high concentration of duplexes in our neighborhood. Over the years, the 45 duplexes in Grayswoods have not proven to enhance the integrity of the neighborhood. As a matter of fact, in the fall of 2011, the City of Des Moines demolished two duplexes. They were located in the vicinity of East 33rd and Kinsey. Both were within one-quarter mile of the proposed rezoning. The lot on Kinsey Avenue will have a single-family home built, and the lot on East 33rd was purchased and will remain vacant. I received a note from Mr. Walker on Friday, July 13th, stating he would be available to discuss this matter and answer any questions that were available on Wednesday, July 18th, yesterday at 5:30. We appreciated the opportunity to meet with him yesterday on the site and to discuss the property he purchased approximately three weeks ago. We suggested he build a single-family home on the property. However, we do not understand his statement that the lot is not large enough for a single-family housing. We would hope that Mr. Walker applied for rezoning. City staff supplied him with a copy of our neighborhood plan. It was unclear to us if he actually read the plan. We're more than happy to supply him with a copy. We are sorry Mr. Walker has purchased the property with the thoughts of building a duplex. However, if he had done due diligence, he would have known it was zoned for single-family housing. To conclude, we oppose rezoning of the property at 2007 East 33rd Street. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition to the application? Seeing none? Need some time? Ms. Walker?
I do believe, I said to her that a duplex is going to fit into this neighborhood in this specific area better than a single-family home. I don't recall ever saying that, I didn't think a single-family home would be allowed here or work here. The neighborhood is a great neighborhood, except for these vacant lots that are ISOs. I believe they need structures on them, or some sort of park on them, or something along that line, and I think this is the best use for this lot. It fits right in with the neighborhood there.
Any questions? Jack?
Maybe you can answer this, Mr. Walker. How long has that lot been vacant?
Quite a few years. On the assessor's side, it's never had a structure on it that I could tell.
Have you had a chance to talk to the owner at 2004 East 33rd, which sounds like it's right across the street? Who's been there for 60 years?
I believe he was at the meeting last night, yes.
Okay. What is the, I mean, he comments here on this card, and I don't know if you know this, or if you've owned the property long enough, is this a fill lot filled with concrete, asphalt, and other sort of waste material?
Not any more so than the lots next to it would have been. There is some fill toward the back, but it's, it looks like it's been there a long time.
And then on Google Earth, it looks like it is used as a parking lot, as another one of your neighbors has observed. Is that kind of the way it gets used now?
That's the way it's looking like, and I will remove those cars. I do not want that to be an ISO.
Are there some concern about the intersection there with the turn lanes and what have you? How have you addressed that in the neighborhood meeting?
I guess that wasn't brought up in the neighborhood meeting, but I did, on my site plan, show a driveway to the back of the property, and that would be a place to turn around.
Thank you. CJ?
Sir, do you plan on living in this building, or would you be an absentee landlord?
I would be an absentee landlord, and I am an absentee landlord of other properties in the metro area.
Thank you.
Sam, do you have something?
Yeah, I just wondered if you considered building a single-family home for rental purposes.
I did run the numbers. I could not get it to work out, and I, even for a saleable single-family property, I don't think it would sell there. It's in between those duplexes, so there's really no other use that I can economically see that's viable other than a duplex.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Want to close the public hearing? Have a motion? Staff's been moved. Any questions? Seeing none? All those in favor of staff's recommendation, and that's to deny, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed? Same sign. One, two. Greg and Mike. Got it? Okay. Thank you. It's been, staff's recommendation's been approved.
Mr. Chair, that would then proceed on to the city council for a public hearing. Eric, do you have the meeting date for that? I guess council would be setting a hearing in two weeks, and then hold the hearing the second meeting of August?
Yes.
I can get that date. It would require a six, seventh...
That's the 16th, isn't it? Didn't we have, where we just moved the one to August 16th?
The council meeting.
Oh, oh, oh.
So it would be anticipated the city council would set a date of hearing on this item on August 13th for August 27th, and it would require a six, seventh vote of the city council to overturn the planning commission's recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item number five. It's a request from Hubble Realty, represented by, Steve, I'm going to mess your name up again, I'm sorry. Neiber? Did you get that?
Ne...
I told you I would. I'm sorry. You just got to come more often, Steve. We don't get enough... Oh, terrible. For review and approval of a site plan, Melbourne Apartments Phase 2 under Design Guidelines for Multiple Family Residential on property owned, located at 5515 Southeast 14th Street to allow development of 62 additional residential units within three, within two three-story apartment buildings. Eric, you presenting on this one, sir?
Yes.
Thank you.
The other thing I wanted to point out is, anyone speaking, if they could sign on the end of the table there before they come up to the podium to help Tammy out, and Kathy, since Kathy's not here, and be helpful for them when they're putting together...
I thought we were doing pretty good.
We're on the last item.
I didn't think of it on the last item.
Perfect.
Well, I've been tracking it down, so... This is the second phase of the Melbourne project. The first phase was in the commercially-zoned area to the west. As you can see, it's now in place with the three buildings and the clubhouse. The applicant originally contemplated two 36-unit buildings for this phase, but now are only proposing two 30-unit buildings. So they're actually going with 12 less units than they had originally proposed when they rezoned this property at the time. You may be wondering why the odd shape for the property, and that is because under our zoning, we still require there to be fr... zoning, we still require there to be frontage on a public street for residentially-zoned So they have met that requirement by coming out and grabbing part of deal, but I do want to point out that that is not because they're proposing an actual access point through that with this plan or any future plan that they contemplated. The general layout is as shown here. The other thing, and you will see all the conditions that were laid out with the rezoning in your staff report, but one of the big ones that came up in the review of this was making sure that they agreed to, and in the original zoning condition, it referred to a berm at the south, but what it's really going to be is a swale to help ensure, give some level of confidence to those neighbors that drainage is not going to sheet down on the backs of their properties. So that was something that was actually agreed to with the rezoning, and I'll let the designer for the applicant get into the specifics of that, but they've provided us with a cross-section of that, and that's been reviewed. I believe they are in agreement with our conditions at this point on the staff recommendation. A couple of highlights on that. Wanted to make sure that the waste collection container enclosure has solid steel gates. That standard has actually changed since the first phase of their development with our requirements and our zoning ordinance, and so that will be one of the things that they will need to do. And then they did provide evidence that they're now proposing a solid fence along here. The originally submitted plan showed a six-foot chain link fence, I believe, and so that has been changed to show that that would be a solid wood fence and that this is going to be put in now along the south boundary as agreed to with the first phase of development. So I'm not sure if there's, I guess I'll ask the commission to provide me if any questions that they don't really understand from the staff report, and I'll allow the designer to elaborate on their project if...
Any questions?
...more detail. Staff is recommending in favor of it, subject to those conditions.
And Eric, so that everybody understands, this is approval of a site plan, not the zoning.
Correct, and so the zoning was already established with those conditions as shown in the zoning history of the staff report.
Mike?
If I might, for the new commissioners, this was a very protracted rezoning debate at the time. The conditions were, there were several meetings between the developer, city, staff, prior to the council hearing on this zoning. And, sorry, Eric, I just want to confirm that the site plan that is submitted is, and with the conditions recommended, is fully compliant with the rezoning that was approved by the council, correct?
Yes, and subject to those conditions, yes.
Subject to the conditions.
The other one I should point out is that it wasn't clear if there was asphalt shingles on the architectural shingles on it, and that was a condition that we recommended.
But the conditions that are in the staff report and the site plan, if they were...
If they meet the conditions in our staff report, then they will be in compliance with the zoning conditions.
Fully compliant with what they said they would do when the rezoning went through.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any questions? Any other questions? Thank you. Could have the applicant come forward? Hello, Steve Nieber.
Hello, Mr. Chairman.
Give you enough opportunity, I'll learn.
I'll come back.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, appreciate your time tonight, and as Eric said, we're proposing Phase Two of our Melbourne apartment project. I'm pleased to report that Phase One has been a success and is consistently run at a hundred percent occupied or a little less, but it's been right up there. So it's been well-received. I think we've been a good neighbor. We've done what we've said we're going to do. We are in agreement with staff report. I would correct one thing that Eric noted, which was, I think your packet's correct, which are sixty-two units, not sixty. It's a thirty-twoplex and a thirtyplex. So it is still far less than seventy-two that was originally on our master plan, so we are less dense. It's actually down about twelve units per acre, a little over that, so it's almost town home zoning-type density. So architecture will be the same for the buildings. Really nothing more to report. We are fully aware and fully intend to do the berm fence landscaping for this phase and then also all the way down to the eastern property line as we agreed to originally. So we've got that on our radar, and we know what we're supposed to do, so we're in agreement with that, and I'm here to answer any question. Doug Saltzgaver here, our engineer, if there's any technical questions, so.
Any questions? Tim?
Hi, Steve. I just, I know, like Mike said, we chopped a lot of wood to get to where we're at, and I know this phase is, this isn't a surprise, and this is the next phase, but I remember a couple of the big issues before this was started was pulling in and out of Southeast Fourteenth. Do you know of any incidents that happened?
I have not heard of any accidents. Now, the neighbors may know something, but I have not heard of any, honestly.
That was a question, and I was just curious if...
You know, we had access...
Approached this with caution, you know, we're adding more, maybe we need to...
One of the...
...relook at this.
Things that was very important to us, and I think as well as the city and the neighbors, was that we had access to the traffic light, and we had that easement through and actually purchased land from Tasty Taco. So we have access to light, and I think a lot of our residents are using that rather than trying to dodge traffic and go across Fourteenth. They use the light to get across.
And that was my second question, was about Tasty Tacos. I know that they were concerned, maybe that they would hurt their business, and I was just wondering if you had any information on that there might have been something that happened that's been corrected or...
I have not. I mean, I think, we have not heard anything from them.
They have looked nice, and I do, you know, like you said, they...
I think the improvements were done up at the intersection, too, at Deal that were talked about, so I think that all, everything should have been done that was talked about.
Thank you.
Any... Joanne, then CJ.
Steve, I have a thought here. Do you feel that the berm that you're building is an aggressive enough plan to handle the runoff because that neighborhood has drowned every time there was a huge...
Yeah.
I know that across the street, Menard has redone their pond, and their water isn't coming across the street like it had in the past.
I think that was actually done about the same time we came through with our project. They were trying to make some modifications, and Wyckoff was moving out, and...
Yeah.
All that was kind of considered at the same time, but I...
But it's still, there's an awful lot of water because the little retention area there on Deal just does not work. So with that and your property all going this way, I'm just hoping that what you're building is going to be aggressive enough to just funnel that into the creek.
There's a swale, and I'll let Doug speak to this, maybe the engineer, but there's a swale and then there's a berm. And as you know, the property falls from north to south, but also then falls west to east, so it's going to, it's going to fall also downstream. But the direction I've given to Doug is we are not to shed any water on those neighbors because that was the commitment we made.
Yeah, yeah, that's been a real issue. Okay, all right, yeah, he'll explain where the swale is because I'm looking at this and I'm not, I'm not seeing it.
It's going right along the property line.
This here?
Doug Saltzgaver, Engineering Resource Group, twenty-four thirteen Grand Avenue, Des Moines. This is a cross-sectional view of what we're proposing. It includes a relatively short berm as you'd be looking at it from the south or where the neighbors' backyards would be. We'd have evergreen trees on the south side of the fence that the residents would be looking at, the neighbors', six-foot-high wood fence, and then on the north side of that, we'd have some deciduous trees, and then that's where the swale would be. And that's going to run anywhere from probably six or seven feet north of the property line to maybe fifteen feet north, depending on where it is, because our property line has some jogs in it as we progress east, so we've got to bend and curve the fence to follow the terrain and the property line.
Okay.
And also, I did submit this morning some additional calculations for that swale capacity. Spoke with staff engineer, and he was in agreement.
CJ?
Actually, this answered my question. The plan called for a chain link fence, and now this picture shows a six-foot-high wood fence. Is that cedar? What is that going to be composed of?
It'd be a typical cedar fence with, we'll want to let the wind through so it doesn't, you know, blow over. Obviously, you've seen where they offset it, probably is the cedar slats.
Thank you.
We submitted chain links, I couldn't remember if we, with all the discussion, ended up with a chain link, because I know there was talk about something on top of it, if it was solid, so I don't, it doesn't matter to me. I don't really care. I just couldn't remember, quite honestly. We had a lot of discussion, so, anyway.
Was it friendly or no?
It was.
Any other questions? Anything else, Steve?
No.
Thank you. Is there anyone here, I'm going to open the public hearing, is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? In favor of the application, please come forward. Seeing none? In opposition to the application, please come forward. If there are a number of you, I'd like you to kind of wind around on the side here by the microphone, so we can kind of move it along.
Don't forget to sign in.
And sign in, yeah. Everyone sign in.
I've signed in.
Give us your name and address.
Okay, Robbie Robinson, fifteen ninety East Deal Avenue, Des Moines. And as far as favor or against, I guess I'm in the middle. I'm not really here to be against so much. But I was in the final meeting that we had at the Armory, and there were, City Council member Coleman was there, and I can't remember very many of the other people, but these gentlemen from Hubble were there. And there seems to be a little bit of a disagreement on as far as the fencing goes. At that time, there was no talk of chain link, and it should be in the document that was presented that night that we all, let's say, signed off on. And it was, what I understand, it was similar to the fence that is at Flewer Drive and Park Avenue, the Hubble development of those townhomes or homes along Park Avenue, the wrought-iron fence with brick pile asters. I remember that distinctly. If they've agreed with the council or planning and zoning, whoever, that this is going to be a change, then I guess that's to be discussed. Also, I don't have that paperwork. I requested it because I was pretty much, I guess, the point man for the neighborhood as, or that night was chosen to be. I didn't ask to be, but I remember distinctly that we had a three-foot berm, because we wanted a six-foot berm, but they pretty much proved that that would be ridiculous. But it was a three-foot. Our question also is about the swell, is how far out the swell is from the berm and where the water goes. And while we're on the water subject, and I know they've tried to make some improvements, but they can come down and measure the creek line, and that's not from that development. But while we're on it, that's something the city will be addressing in the state or DNR or somebody. It's eaten us up. I've probably lost another five foot of my yard. It's over thirty-seven foot wide, and as I presented in the past, my children could run and jump over that creek. So keep that in mind if there's anything going on. As far as development or changes to improvements, I said it before about the Easter Lake problem, we're in the wrong spot. We need to be correcting the problem that's causing the siltation of the lake, as I presented before. We're wasting money, we're throwing taxpayer money away. If, when the dredging process comes, we need to address the problem first. That makes sense to anybody, any taxpayer, I would think. Off that subject, as far as the water, we have a grassland there now that they've done a good job of mowing it and taking care of it. That's going to change drastically when the pavement hits the ground. So whatever the studies were, the recommendations, or whoever signed off on what this plan is and what it's going to do, I'm kind of curious about how they come to those conclusions without the concrete being there. I guess my main concern is the berm, the swell, where the water's going. We know where it's going. Easter Lake, that's nice that they're taking us into consideration as adjacent property owners, that it doesn't enter ours like it has for years. And also, I'd like to know about the plan. I didn't quite see where the buildings were going to be placed. There was a fifty-five and older. I think that's been removed. The fifty-five, I know you've taken a building away.
Mr. Chairman, that's inaccurate. What was in the rezoning was the...
I think you've removed that.
Most eastern building.
That evening, the way we understood it was that the one closest to our property and my neighbor, Mary Butler, that that would be a fifty-five and older. Maybe that one's been removed.
That's correct. What you're saying is correct.
Okay.
So here's the, here's the plan, it's a photocopy of it, that was approved back then, but the closest building, which would have been this building right here, was the one that was talked as a fifty-five age restricted product, and that we have not changed that plan. We understand that's what needs to be done, but we're not there. We're here. These are the two buildings we're talking about.
Sure.
And this is the first phase.
Okay, so whenever, whatever the next phase is, that would be included in the next one, probably?
I can't commit to that.
Okay.
I don't know what phase that'll be.
Okay. Is there going to be three or four?
We show four.
Okay, four phases or buildings?
Buildings.
Okay.
It's all driven by the market, so it's hard for me. I just don't want to represent.
No, that's fine.
The market's going to drive the leasing, so...
This is the plan that's being right now.
And this is the one that we talked about back in '09.
Okay, well, again, this, you know, being there, there must have, I don't know where this chain link come from, but I don't, that wasn't part of the original plan when we were in Armory. I guess whatever they accepted, it'll be accepted. Also, I'd like to know a couple pieces here with the berm. I remember three-foot distinctly.
Robbie, I want to give you another minute.
Okay, that's fine. I'd like to know about the grasses that are mentioned, that if those will just be mowed or will they be like a prairie grass, like I've seen in some of the single-family developments by Hubble? I thought those were real nice. They were on the backside of the properties. I liked it. Now, I don't know if this is part of it or if they can address that, but that seems like something would slow the water down considerably, and I don't know if that's part of this plan. They talk about native grasses, and I suppose if they're left like a prairie grass, that would be beneficial. Those are my other questions, except for also the trees. It mentions the conical, the evergreens, and the other trees. I was just curious, are they a foot tall, five foot tall when they put them in? Takes twenty years to grow one six or eight foot tall sometimes. That's, I don't see that being addressed. Also, it's about the existing trees. There are some large trees in the middle of the property. I'm hoping that if it's in the plan that those would remain. They're very nice trees.
Thank you, Robbie.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else here to speak in opposition to the application? Please come forward, give us your name and address.
My name's Mary Butler, and I live at fifteen forty East Deal Avenue. We purchased the property after this was all proposed, and were informed about it after we actually purchased the property. We don't object to the apartments. We do have some questions, though.
This is one of the documents that I obtained by requesting them. Our property is right here, next to the green space, and you can see where the fence seems to intersect with our fence. Is there going to be room in between for the trees that you're talking about putting in, or are we going to lose our fence?
Doug?
Yes, that was more of a preliminary drawing. I know that that fence has been moved further north now, and we'd be more than happy to work with you on the exact location of that.
I want to make sure there's room for us to maintain the grass in between.
Sure.
Because right now, my husband maintains that.
And we've got quite a bit of real estate there that we can, so we're not extremely tight there, so...
That was the question that I had. I would also like to know what kind of trees they're going to put in. Want to address Robbie's questions?
Yeah, I don't recall the species of the evergreen particularly, but I do know that the ordinance requires they have to be minimum six-foot height, so they will be a decent size, and the deciduous, I believe, have to be a minimum inch and a half, one and a half inch.
Yeah, deciduous are on other...
Doug, aren't we more worried about the caliper than the height?
Yes, for the deciduous. The evergreens are measured in height.
The evergreens will also be six-foot?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition? Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition? You're not going to do that, are you, Eric?
No way I'm not.
We go ahead and close the public hearing. Doug, do you have any more time?
I'll just answer Robbie's question about, I recall specifically that we had agreed to do native plannings or prairie grass between the fence and their property lines, and that's what we're planning on doing. So I do recall that. And I will say, I do not recall any conversation about brick piers and picket fences at that meeting at the Armory.
If I may, Mr. Chair, in your packet was included a council communication back on May 18, 2009 of the rezoning. So this was a, we provided a summary of that May 11 meeting to the council for their rezoning hearing. And several points, I want to point out, the, under the additional information on, I guess it'd be page two of six of that communication to council, second bullet point under density, it said, please refer to the attached drawing that showed the proposed berm, six-foot-high solid fencing and dense landscaping to provide it along the south boundary as a buffer to existing residential uses. And then repeated under, it would be the last bullet point under that category, it says, attendees agreed that a berm with a six-foot fence on top of, on top and landscaping on both sides of the fence along the south boundary should be installed at the beginning of that phase to prevent runoff during construction and provide immediate buffer to the neighbors during construction. And I believe that was the phase that was not the commercial zone property, it was going to be extended along there. So Steve, just to correct, with this phase, you'll be constructing that berm all along the south boundary, correct?
Correct. That's our understanding, is that what we agreed to was even though we'll go beyond this phase and go all around to the south.
All the way to the far east.
On the south boundary, all the way to the east.
Right.
That's what we agreed to.
And that is, that is consistent with what was provided to the council as a summary.
Okay. Ted?
I'll move staff.
Okay. Any discussion? Joanne?
I just thought of something. On the east side, and I don't know if we can put this into what is required here, but on the east side, a number of years ago, the neighbors were having problems similar to what you're losing your backyard. And what was done was a trench, a cement trough along the waterway. Is that something that would be useful to put into, to make sure that it doesn't wash out the ground around it? And it really did help that neighborhood? This kind of weather, we don't care.
From the staff perspective, I think as much natural cover as we can get it, the better to keep the water getting into the ground sooner. When we pave it, you're just, you're conveying that further down the system.
Okay, so there's going to be sufficient plant?
So I think the idea would be, we'd want more absorption and a design that would infiltrate quicker.
Oh, okay. It was just a thought.
That works, I think, when you have those erosive slopes, in short sections possibly, but in this case, I think we're asking Doug to design it at a slope that's going to have a velocity that can be absorbed into the ground.
CJ, did you have anything? Okay. Committee over here. There being no additional comments, I'm going to take it to a vote. All those in favor, please signify by using your right hand. Pose, same sign, acclamation. Thank you. It passes, thank you. Mike, there's nothing on here that indicates that we have any time for a director's, no, oh wait, here it is, committee and directors.
Just, just very quickly, as you recall, item six was continued to the August 16 meeting. There will, there is a meeting scheduled on August 1st, 6:00 to 8:00 PM at Lincoln High School in their commons area between the Watcher South Neighborhood Association, the developer and city staff. So that was scheduled today in conjunction with the Neighborhood Association and the developer concurrently agreeing, so we did get that scheduled. So hopefully we'll have a discussion at that meeting where we can at least address some of the issues that people had last night. I know it was a large crowd, to say the least, at the South Side Library, but I know that the, the leadership of the Neighborhood Association clearly do not expect that large of a crowd when they, when they scheduled that place and has not had that larger crowd at any of their previous meetings. So they have, they've, they've made an honest attempt to try and accommodate the meeting and it just, it over exceeded the room. So we hope that the commons area at Lincoln High School will be a conducive environment for the meeting and we'll have that on August 1st, once again, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. The other thing I have is there...
Send an email for us, please.
Yeah, I can forward you the press release that we sent out today on that. And then also, there is no meeting with the city manager tomorrow, no lunch meeting. He is going to be out of the office tomorrow. So, thank you.
I have something I want to just run by staff, just mention if that's appropriate to do.
Go ahead.
Okay. I have State Extension, and this is, this is passed. This happens every spring. Offers a fantastic course for plan and zoning commissioners. And I'd just like to kind of run the idea of a flagpole and see if the commission members would be interested in this. I think it'd be very beneficial just for us as a commission if we had the opportunity to be able to participate in something like that. I think sometimes there are non-German conversations when we have folks that come up and, and I think it'd be great to have just an opportunity to review some of that information.
We've had that, just so everybody's clear, we've had that in the past, we haven't had it recently. I don't think since anybody's been, majority of you.
Where do they hold the session?
Well, we held, we held it before, Wabelin?
Yeah, I think we've talked to staff about having a session set up within the next six months for the commission. And we also talked about bringing in ISU Extension to actually help with that training session. As you'll recall, in your, in your commissioner notebook manual that we gave you when you came on the commission, there are several sections on individual things commissions do that are from the ISU Extension handbook. And so it is an excellent resource. And so we have talked about doing that and I totally agree with your suggestion that we could get something scheduled in the near future on that.
Okay, thank you.
Greg, RNO?
We have, we have any next round that, that we have to...
Okay, what are we, what are we working on?
Next Wednesday will be the liquor regs, the actual ordinance change. The text is being prepared and that reminds me of one additional meeting next Thursday night here in the council chambers. We will be having the public information meeting with all of the current beer, wine, liquor license holders, as well as, we invited Walgreens representatives and at least two legal representatives for some of the smaller business owners in Des Moines, so...
That's next Thursday.
That's next Thursday. So the commission, the RNO will be asked to review the regulations, will also get additional input on Thursday night. And then on August 2nd, which will be in two weeks, we anticipate having the ordinance in front of the full commission for public hearing.
What day is that?
Thursday.
Thursday, August 2nd. And you'll recall that at 4:30 that night, there's an MPO session over at the, over at the World Food Prize. So we're not having a 5:30 early session, just, we'd ask you to, if you can, make it to the 4:30 session at the World Food Prize and then come over here and we'll have our P&amp;Z meeting starting at 6:00.
Would you have that put on the agenda somewhere or another, just as a jog?
Yes, we can do that.
It'd be nice.
I'll remember to do that. I have to add the text item too, so I'm excited.
Anything else for the good of the group? Seeing none, adjourn.